Okay, good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for Wednesday, June 18th, 2025. It's 9:05 a.m. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board. It's my left Vice Chair, Commissioner Wayne Fournier, Commissioners Rachel Grant, Emily Klaus, and Kellyanne Mejia, participating virtually, County Manager here, Leonard Hernandez, and public virtual attendance available on our Thurston County YouTube channel. Written public comment may be received up to two hours in advance of this meeting. It would be distributed to the Board. Action may be taken at this meeting. First up on the morning's work session agenda is a 2025 Legislative Session debrief. We have Deb Mejia from Capital Consulting. And so I guess I'll just turn the floor over to you, Deb.
Good morning, Commissioners. Okay, I'm challenged on this. Is Josh coming?
No, he is out today.
Okay, I'm gonna take his seat then if that's okay, so that I can see the screen better.
Yeah, sure. Some Assistant County Man.
So, just want to do a real quick wrap-up of what happened during legislative session. I know you all were very much involved in that and appreciate the involvement. And with that, we'll just go ahead and kick this off. There we go. So I'm going to briefly give a high-level overview of the budgets that were passed, talk about county priorities, and some other areas that the county is interested in. And then I'm really hoping that we can spend some time talking about next steps and where we go from here. So it was a long session. It was 105 days. And during the long sessions, the legislature adopts three biennial budgets, operating capital and transportation. And the operating budget needs to balance to four years. And it was a very challenging legislative session. The state was facing a $16 billion budget deficit in the operating budget, a $1 billion deficit in the transportation budget for the upcoming biennium, which starts July 1st, and then got bigger after that. The capital budget was also constrained, but of the three, it probably was in the best shape. And so we had a lot of new legislators this session. We had a lot of new committee chairs. We had a new governor. There were a lot of changes. And as I said, it was a really challenging budget situation for the legislature. There were, it's been a long time. I've been doing this for a long time. It's been a long time since it's been this bad. And there are, as I said, a lot of new legislators that were never in the kind of position that they were in this session in terms of having to make some really, really tough decisions. So, in fact, Lieutenant Governor Heck, who has been around for a long time, I think when I first met him, he was Chief of Staff to Governor Gardner, said that it was brutal. You've never seen anything like it. And there were some really challenging things that happened within the legislative family, too. So it was a tough year.
Can I ask a question on that? Because was it more about like the types of decisions that had to be made? The reason I ask is because like I remember, and I don't follow blow-by-blow, that's why I'm asking you, but like I remember when I first moved here, remember reading stuff in the paper about like lots of shenanigans and tricks being played between like, I remember Frank Chop being leader of one of the parties, and he was always instrumental and like he was a master of letting, and people would be, you know, there were a lot of like, seemed like there were a lot of legislative process shenanigans going on. I didn't hear any of that this year. I just heard it seemed like legislators were just working through really tough stuff. Was I missing stuff? Were there shenanigans going on?
I wouldn't call them shenanigans, but there's always, tricks isn't the right word either. There's always things that they can do in order to like move things and make things not as bad as they are, and use different assumptions and calculations to make the numbers work the way that they need to work in order to do the things they need to do. And they were talking about moving some things around. And you know, anytime you have a non-appropriated account that's not dedicated to a specific purpose, legislators can move those monies around. And so there was still some of that going on, but I think what made it so tough is, and it really started before session started, was they knew that they were going to have a really, really difficult budget to deal with. And they knew they were going to have to adopt new revenue. And there was no agreement between the caucuses on how to do that. And they knew that they were going to have to make some really tough budget cuts, which they did. So it was a combination of all those things. And then, you know, we lost Secretary of State Ralph Monroe, we lost Speaker Chop, we lost Senator Ramos, Senator Gilton's wife passed. I mean, there was a lot of really tough things that happened also on top of the fighting that was going on back and forth and the tough decisions that needed to be made. Okay, so in terms of the operating budget, as I said, they made a lot of cuts. They made over $7 billion worth of cuts for the four-year budget period. And some of those cuts were pretty brutal. So they had to make some difficult decisions. And I will say that the next revenue forecast comes out next week, and we're not expecting it to be a good revenue forecast. And the Director of OFM has already sent out budget instructions to cabinet agencies as they prepare for the supplemental budget for next session. And she's, they're letting them know that there could be more cuts.
What's, what's the?
Sales tax revenue is down. There's federal.
Are there any theories?
Yeah, well, people are afraid. They don't know what's gonna happen. And we don't know what's gonna happen at the federal level either. We don't know if the state's gonna have to dip into the rainy day fund. There's just so many uncertainties that.
I was told by some Canadian, or not Canadian, some county folks that live on the border that like tourism from Canada is down like 50%?
Yes.
That like nobody's traveling south from Canada, like they, and their budgets are just shot.
I was in Seattle yesterday, meeting with someone, and they were talking about the lack of visitors from Canada. So that's, that's correct. The tariff wars, there's just, there's so much going on at the federal level that we don't know how it's going to impact the state.
They're still recalibrating taking place on the sales tax projections coming out of the pandemic, similar to what Summer has been communicating. It's, it's that.
It's having longer probably runways than.
Yeah. And so when you look at, we're projecting this, if it underperforms, then you have that delta that you have to readjust to, similar to what the county is having to do. And that's problematic because that's not what the forecast was several years back. Everyone thought that because of the infusion of dollars into the economy, that sales tax would continue to come back stronger than we're actually realizing. So it's not that sales tax isn't increasing. It's not increasing to the level that we projected. It's still underperforming.
And the stock market's doing this, and people are just, you know, they're being more cautious about spending money. So it's a combination of different factors. Costs continue to go up, so it's a whole bunch of different things that are going into that. But in terms of new revenue, they, they did pass some revenue bills. The three major ones are the ones that I have listed here. 2081, it only, it changes the B and O. It only affects the state portion, though, not, not the local portion. 5813 expands the capital gains tax. So the first million stays at 7%. Any gains exceeding a million now go to 9.9%, and that's retroactive to the beginning of the year. And they made some changes to the estate tax, and then excise taxes. So in that, it affects things. They extended that to things like IT services, like custom website building and technical training and security services and things like that. And so if there's a potential that it, there could be an increase of revenue to local governments if those businesses are within the county. But that's, that's dependent on that. So I'm not gonna go through all of these bullets, but they did make some key investments. There was a, you may remember there was a lot of discussion about how to fund K-12 and special education, although they did make an unbelievable amount of cuts to children's services and to youth development. They did also make a big investment into K-12 education and to the material supplies and operating costs for schools, IMSOC, and then some other core services. This is just a quick snapshot of the state's shared revenues. And the, for, the middle column is what the legislature adopted for the current biennium that ends at the end of this month. And then the last column is what they adopted. So it relatively stayed the same, but they didn't cut it. And so I think people felt like that was, that was, that was a win.
This, this table represents what exactly? The revenues that we share with them?
Yeah, that the state shares with the counties, yes. Do you want me to go back to that?
Well, I'll just, I mean, so you're just basically saying we shouldn't expect necessarily any hits there locally?
Well, I don't know what's gonna happen next session, but I think people felt like if you didn't get cut, that was, that was a win. Yeah. Then on the capital budget, they did do seven, a seven and a half billion dollar capital budget, and they left $349 million in bond capacity for next year, which I believe is about three times as much, as much as what they left for the last supplemental budget. So there is gonna be some money, hopefully, in the capital budget next session. So if the county has a capital budget request, now would be the time to really be pulling that together and be working with our delegation and talking with them and trying to get some support to get something in the capital.
Future years are unknown, or is it just, that makes it a prime year?
They, they were very deliberate. The capital budget chairs were very deliberate in leaving some money in the capital budget to do some projects for next session. But they did.
We're gonna need all 349 million. I said, we're gonna need all 349 million.
Okay, we'll put that on the list. No, I, I do, I mean, we'll talk about that when we get to the county slide. But yeah, there, I think that you can make a really good case for getting a chunk of that, that money. So they made a record investment into the Housing Trust Fund, 605 million. They did a lot for expanding services for community-based behavioral health care, 130 million for that, 70 of which is for competitive grants for facilities like 23-hour crisis facilities. And so we should be talking about that as well. Okay. And then they made some investments from the Climate Commitment Act also, as they did with all three of the budgets.
Did you go over the 772 million for housing and homeless programs?
Do you want more specifics on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I know I've got it somewhere in one of these slides. Probably would be easier for me if I follow up with you and I give you the, the list.
Okay, I agree.
Yeah, yeah. I know it's, yeah, I'll get, I'll get it to you again.
Thank you.
On the transportation budget, as I mentioned, they were also facing a shortfall, increasing costs, decreasing gas tax. There was a lot of discussion about doing a road usage charge that didn't happen. And I don't know if they'll bring that up again next session. But their choices were to create new revenue or to pause projects that had already started. And there were already commitments to start. And then one of those projects was the roundabout at Veil Road for the county, too. That was, that was, that was a difficult one to get over the, over the line. They were looking at things at such a fine granular level in terms of what they were going to be cutting. And they really got into the kind of detail that they'd never done before. And so those, those are the two main bills where they increased revenue for the transportation budget. The first one is an increase in the state fuel tax, and then some luxury taxes, luxury vehicle taxes, things like that, new fees, higher fees. And then, first time I can remember, there was, there was a really strong commitment to interweave the operating budget with the transportation budget, and at one point, the capital budget, which was kind of scary because there was a bill that would have permanently diverted the funds that go into the Public Works Assistance account. So that was stopped. But, you know, no, no good ideas ever completely go away. So we'll see what happens next session. But what they did do was they passed, they moved some money from transportation that would have normally gone to transportation into the operating budget because the operating budget was in such bad shape. But then they made the commitment that starting in fiscal year '28, so the following biennium, there would be a permanent dedication, a point 1% of the current state sales tax that would go to transportation. We'll see if that happens. See what happens with the budget. And then there, there was also a lot of discussion about what to do with the state's fish barriers in the injunction area, because the state is not gonna meet their timeline, and they don't have enough money to finish. And so mediation is happening between the state and the tribes, but they did put a $1 billion into the biennial transportation budget to address those barriers. So we'll have to see what happens with that. That's another big unknown for the transportation budget, or if they move that to the capital budget, which was why they were gonna divert the funds from the Public Works Assistance account to help pay for the barriers. And so it got very complicated. Okay, on the county's legislative priorities, fiscal sustainability was a big one for the county. Of course, the county was supporting the, lifting the property tax cap. There were like, I think like six bills at one point that would have addressed that in some fashion. One bill that made it to the finish line was House Bill 2049, but it was amended at the end of session to remove the property tax cap piece of it. And it only gives 42 schools for their local rates. So it helped the schools. Some people say it sets up for a clarity, too, but it helps the schools. And it did not help local governments. Protecting the Capitol Forest was another priority. There was $23 million in the capital budget to DNR, and up to 10 million of that can be used to, to replace structurally complex carbon-dense forested state trust lands, including those lands in Thurston County. So there's a process that needs to be gone through. You're probably familiar that, you know, the Board of Commissioners needs to work with the Board of Natural Resources. And there's some things that need to be done in order to make all that happen, but there's a process that requires that.
I thought I heard that whereas the last tranche of funds, we, the county's had to request, I think I heard in a meeting that this one's not gonna be down the same, like DNR is gonna basically, just like, we don't have to, we don't have to put our hand up. DNR is basically gonna figure it out, like where they're gonna go. If you hear anything about that, let me know.
I mean, if you look at the, the language that's in the budget proviso, it spells out that what the county needs to do and what the Board of.
That might have changed again since the last time I heard.
So there is a process that needs to be followed on that. But I'm sure DNR is probably gonna take a, we have a different commissioner, so he'll probably wanna take a different approach to how that's done. And then the Regional Courthouse campus, we didn't quite get our ask in this position that it needed to be in, in order to get anything over the finish line. But now would be the time to get that put together, and.
I think we're ready now. Like this will be our, I think this will be like one of our top priorities. You can speak for everybody, but I, I think that's the way we're moving.
That's great. We did get the reappropriation for the Veil Road roundabout, so that was good news. Court costs for Maple Lane, some of these things were listed on your priorities, and some of them were just priorities that came up during legislative session. Court costs for Maple Lane, there was some money that was put into the healthcare authorities' budget that goes through the BHASO. They added an additional 67,000 for the current fiscal year, and then 381,000 for next biennium to reimburse the county for the cost of conducting the 180-day civil commitments at Maple Lane. We tried to get an additional one-time appropriation. We were unsuccessful on doing that. But they did pass Senate Bill 5745. And so with, and mostly they did it for King County, but with that, the county can request the healthcare authority to contract for counsel with the Office of Public Defense. So depending on where the county's at and the decisions that you make, that is an option if, if you need to go that route.
So what happened there? We were talking one minute about getting money to help rebuild the courtroom, and then it was no longer a conversation?
There, there was, do you want me to answer this?
Yeah, I'll fill in.
There was some uncertainty in terms of what the cost would be. And we were told that because of the constraints on the capital budget, that we could only ask for a certain amount, which was much lower than what the county thought was gonna be needed. And so, you know.
Still a good amount of money.
I think it was 100,000.
Yeah, so boil down to, we weren't gonna be able to build a courthouse for that, I mean, a courtroom for that amount of money. I think there was some confusion in what space was identified as available. It was not available because the prosecuting attorney is actually in that space right now. And so it was, this kind of had.
Confusion, sorry. Keep talking. I'm just, okay.
So we were getting our, our ducks together in a row, identifying that 100,000 isn't gonna work. When Deb took that back, it was like, that's all we're gonna give you. If you can't guarantee a courthouse for 100,000, then it's off the table, and we gotta move on. The last place we wanted to be was to say, we're gonna get a, I say courthouse, I mean courtroom, excuse me. We're gonna get you a courtroom, and then we get to 100,000, and it's like 250 or 300,000.
Yeah.
And then we can't deliver on that. We have to come back for general fund request.
Okay.
So they wanted to move faster than we could actually get our hands around that situation.
Okay.
And when they were like, it's either this or nothing, because we were asked, can you give us a little bit more? Can we have a little bit more time? And they're like, no, we gotta go. It's this or nothing. And we had to say, we cannot. I could not tell the commissioners, yes, we are absolutely guaranteed, when our, our staff are like, 100,000 will not get us all the way there.
Yeah, yeah. And we can't make a promise we can't deliver on.
No, because that'd be embarrassing for the county and for the representative that was going to the mat for us to get the funds.
Yeah. And next time we go make an ass, they're not even gonna answer the phone.
Because we probably, yeah.
So glad to hear that we're planning to move forward on that, and we can start talking with the delegation about that and getting something in, in the works on that one. Unfortunately, the legislature cut in half the judicial reimbursement to the county. We were getting about 1.1 million dollars a year for that. And in the final budget that came out, they only funded the second fiscal year of the biennium. And so I've had some communications on that. I don't know if the, I don't know what the county can do. I mean, there, there's a few things that we can look at. We can look at going, going for a supplemental budget request for the current fiscal year, which is something that they'll do first part of session, if we can build support for that, and getting that, getting the money back that we would have lost for the first fiscal year. If there can be conversations with the governor, who is our former Attorney General, who understands the importance of Thurston County, and what the role that they play in the court system, and working with the current Attorney General, seeing if they've got maybe a reserve fund where they can help the county. Or I don't know what the county's options are in terms of making decisions about taking on those court cases. But I think that for, from here on out, we probably need, we definitely need to flag any legislation that comes forward, no matter what the subject matter is that says, and any cause of action needs to be brought forward in Thurston County. And we oppose that based on, if there's no, if there's no funding in that, no, we, we have to oppose that piece of the legislation. So kind of the way WASAC does with giving counties responsibility, but not the funding in order to do that.
And if I can add, Deb, Commissioners, we have rounded up with the stakeholders internally, even met with, what was it, Amy? Chris AOC.
Stanley.
To have that, Chris Stanley, thank you, to have the conversation about what our coordinated outreach to the state will be, about the impact of that. There's something that we're working through gathering a product together that we will share with all of you.
Another thing that came up during session was Senate Bill 5154, which would have changed the duties for the county auditor, changed, clarified, pending in your perspective. And so the bill died. There was at one point a proposal to clarify what the Board of County Commissioners authority is in terms of how they wanted their draft budget prepared. But that, because the bill died, that did not go forward. But if that's still something that you wanna pursue, we should talk about.
Is it something that's gonna come up again, and something we should be in front of, and have our own kind of solution before we get surprised?
My recommendation is that you, that, that if, if you're hearing that it's gonna come up again, that yeah, we should have a, we should have a solution. But we don't wanna put our delegation in a difficult situation either. And so I think that there needs to be some discussions beforehand. It would be great if we could all come together and say, this is how we think it should be, or we all say, we leave it alone. But.
Yeah, I, I know that there was, I'm kinda putting Commissioner Mejia on the spot. That was me just clearing my throat. But the idea of there being a special call-out for counties with five commissioners, see my throat is froggy. And so us looking at that, but yes, I think being proactive would be a good approach, Commissioner Fournier.
And I think that based on discussions that have, happened at LSC, there are other counties with three commissioners that would be very interested in clarifying what the Board of County Commissioners authority is in terms of preparing the draft budget. So I think it would be broader than just, just the five.
Wonderful. Oh, thank you so much.
And I think that that would be something that WASAC could vote on in terms of supporting something like that.
Yeah, I think the clarity will be good for the whole state.
Supporting, supportive housing under the Right-Away Initiative, the state did reduce the annual funding for this program from 75 million a year to 45 million a year. And it, this, that round of funding pays for people who have already been brought inside through the program to stay housed. So that was a significant reduction there. There was no new money for local parks' maintenance and operations. The Southwest Ag Business Park did not receive another appropriation for the capital budget. But I will, and I don't know if they've spent all of their money that they have gotten over the last few years from the capital budget. But I did see a couple of things this year that I hadn't seen before, where basically, to me, it was a signal that the legislature is gonna stop re-appropriating capital budget funds that are unspent, because they, they reappropriate, they reappropriate, they reappropriate. And I saw some language that said, if this money is not spent by a certain time, we're not re-appropriating, and it goes back into the pot. So I, I.
I think they got 250,000 for a different piece of their project.
For the current?
The meat processing aspect of their.
Out of the, the current budget?
Yes.
Oh, they did? Oh, well, that's good to know. Okay, I missed that. Thank you. Is, and where's the meat processing?
It's on the ag park, but it's just at the back, kind of the back envelope of property.
Oh, wow, that's good to know. Okay, yeah, I searched in there, and I didn't see anything, so it must be under a different, can I know? Okay, okay. Through a local community project, LCP? Okay, is that Rep. Barnum?
No, it would have been Barkus.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Missed that. And then, of course, public defense. So let's go to the next slide. So they did increase the public defense funding to cities and counties through the Office of Public Defense. I've sent Leonard some information on that. Applications are due July 25. And of course, the court, the Supreme Court, and the justices unanimously agree to set the new statewide standards for public defenders. And that starts beginning of next year. There's a 10-year timeframe by which people have to comply. And I know that Eric Young put a statement out there about being opposed to what they've done. I don't know what's gonna happen with that. I don't see the legislature doing anything to counteract what the court said. I don't know if the legislature is looking at providing any additional funding to help pay for the ripple costs of what this will be. But I know that there's gonna be an awful lot of discussions.
Like a magical attorney factory where they're gonna create the attorneys?
Right, yeah. And then the, the, the public defenders, prosecutors, the spaces, all that kind of stuff. The administrative staff, you know, everything that's involved in terms of what, what that means. And so.
Compliance, I think. They must comply. What is that?
So they, public defenders can handle a maximum of 47 felony cases or 120 misdemeanor cases in a year. So they, public defenders can handle a maximum of forty-seven felony cases or a hundred and twenty misdemeanor cases in a year. My understanding is, and you probably know this better than I do, the last time they did this, there was a waiting that they, that they came up with in terms of, well, this kind of a case can be this much.
The study is, the study included waiting and they encourage waiting, but they didn't prescribe any, like, formula for waiting. They gave some, some guidelines, said, if you're going to wait, you know, we encourage you to do a waiting system, which would further potentially reduce, because it would mean like a murder, like a murder case, you wouldn't just be one. You know, you might get five for that and then that's, now you're forty-two, you know, now you're forty-seven is forty-two, like, whatever. I mean, that's just the simplest example, but, um, they didn't say how to wait it. They said, you know, if you're going to wait it, consider these three fact, you know, principles, but they've kind of left it to us, but they didn't require it. So, if we were taking the most conservative approach financially, right, you would just, you wouldn't wait it, because you don't, you're not mandated to. It's good to wait it, because, I mean, there, there, there's got to be some waiting, I think, I, I, I like the highest level. But how granular and like specific you get on that is going to have to, I think, evolve over time as we try to fund it and structure it in a way that, you know, fits the county's.
What happens if like Okanagan County says, we can't find the attorneys, we cannot comply, what happens then?
Well, like, I think, well, like in Oregon, didn't they have a situation where like public defenders were just not accepting cases? And, you know, they, it was like back in, it's in the, it's like the judge.
They go on strike, kind of?
Kind of, they just won't take the case, like this is in violation of Supreme Court's rules. And then the judge is left with like a defendant in front of them and no attorney. The, the judges start, can start like, I, I can't remember what all happened, but like, they can start like co-opting private attorneys and forcing cases on them like on an emergency basis. But I mean, they're, it, it comes to a cri- like, the, different people have different levers of power and, and can force the issue into a pretty nasty situation.
Could misdemeanor cases just be dismissed then?
Well, you know, that's all up to the prosecutor, like, like, that's the prosecutor's lever, right? Like, if you don't, if you underfund the prosecutor's office, like, let's say prosecutors who also would like, they have some caseload standards, they'd like to update their caseload standards. So let's just say, cases are flowing in and it's in violation and the county commissioners won't fund more prosecutors, they'll just, they just won't file the cases. They have, prosecutors have the ultimate, like, um, spigot, you know, like, control the spigot. Yeah, like the, the cops can keep referring things, but they can't make the prosecutors file the cases. Now, the defense lawyers, you know, like, the judge, once the case is filed, the judge is basically responsible for making sure nothing proceeds forward in violation of the constitutional rights of the defendant. So, defendant at that point must have counsel under the, under Sixth Amendment. So, you know, then you have a situation where the case is like frozen until the judge can figure out, who's going to represent this person?
They have like.
They could go to court and ask for a, an injunction against the public defender agency to force them. I mean, I, I, I haven't seen it go to that, but I'm just trying to think if I were this presiding judge and I was, what, what's, what's my toolbox here?
Is there a timeline that they have?
Yeah, they have speedy trial, trials, I mean, the constitution, most states have rules that if cases can't get resolved within a certain number of days and then, and then there's no waivers by the defendant, a case must be dismissed. Now, there's, there's, there's safety valves to that and this would probably be a good cause safety valve. So I think they could get around speedy trial in this type of situation. But ultimately, they can't move a case forward without a lawyer. So, anyway, yeah, it, it can be.
There's a lot there.
Totally interesting thing. So my question was on that first bullet, the thirteen point six million, for what exactly? Just general public defense expenditures? I mean, because it's like, if that's what it's about, why wouldn't they have just div- I mean, we've all got the same, like, you mean, like, if we have to apply for it, is it for specific purposes, like only certain programs?
I can get an update from you from Patrick, I, I did share this with him when Deb sent it over. He's tracking it and so that they'll have their application in. Um, so I'll ask him for something to brief the board on. Ultimately, we plan to bring him to the table when he's ready to talk about the caseload impact with our budget team so we can get an overview of what the, uh, application of those caseloads is going to be to the county.
Because I had heard there was a small amount of public defense funding, you know, not what we asked. We asked for a hundred percent or whatever and there was something much less than that that'll be swallowed up by these new standards. But I never quite heard what the new money would do.
On OPD's website, it talks about what they're, um, who's eligible and what they're looking at. And so there are some specific things.
Okay, I can probably check it there.
And I know that Leonard has that information also. Um, and then, um, in term, oh, and the other thing I just wanted to mention on this is, you know, talking about waiting and, and complex cases. When I worked with the county several years ago on judicial reimbursement, one of the other highlights that the county made was they deal with some really, really complex cases. Like the big Bertha case came to Thurston County. And so there's, there, you know, there's an awful lot of complexity to the kinds of state cases that come to Thurston County. So that kind of gets woven into the whole court cost issue. Um, and then on behavioral health, they did pass eighteen, House Bill eighteen eleven, um, which is, um, training for co-response and support. And then, um, AWC administers a four million dollar grant program to help fund startup costs, where the cities have to be the, the lead partner, but they can partner with counties on that too. So there's some money there. And then, I didn't put this on there, but, um, also want to mention, um, the, the law enforcement grants, House Bill twenty fifteen. Um, and that is something that, um, did pass. Um, if you'll remember, Governor Ferguson said in his inaugural address, I want to see a hundred million dollars in the budget for new law enforcement officers. So twenty fifteen, um, moves in that direction. Uh, there is a hundred million dollar grant program that can be used for criminal justice purposes, that the Criminal Justice Training Commission will be administering. I reached out to Captain Alexander, the executive director of CJTC over the weekend. And she let me know that they are, um, working on getting a, um, contract in place with someone that's going to help them administer this. They're going to have a dedicated space on their website to provide information for, um, for local governments. And that, you know, they're, they're trying to get this stood up as soon as possible.
CJTC will be administering this?
The grant program, yes. And there is a long list of things in the bill that you must meet in order to be eligible to receive a grant. And, um, I can, I can fry that too if you want, but, um, basically, there's a whole bunch of things you have to do. And then also, the bill gives local governments the authority to, um, council manically, do a, adopt a new zero point one percent sales tax for criminal justice purposes. But in order to be able to do that, you also have to meet the requirements of being eligible for the grant program. So, um, you know, there's training requirements that are in place and, um, s- some assertions that the county needs to make in terms of things that it's doing correctly. Um, again, it's, it's a pretty long list of things.
Is that published somewhere or is it?
Well, it's in the bill, it's in the bill. I know, I, I believe that WASAC is going to be coordinating this for counties. I know AWC is doing that for cities. I'm happy to send you the bullet list of the different things that, um, you have to, state laws that you have to comply with. And, for instance, um, at least twenty-five percent of officers who have completed, you have to have at least twenty-five percent of officers who have completed CJTC Crisis Intervention Team Training. And, um, you have to make sure that your police chief sheriff or marshal, who is CJTC certified, doesn't have any felony convictions or gross misdemeanors. I mean, there's just a long list of things that they put in there that you have to meet in order to be able to pass the new tax and to be able to, to be eligible to get the grant. And if you, if something happens, you have to pay it back. And so, anyway, there, there's, there's a lot there.
Pretty good on that HB one eight one one. I sent a note to my counterparts in, uh, the cities, just letting them know that the county is interested in partnering. And, because it does have to be initiated by a city. So, uh, they know that we are open to engagement and they're, they're looking at it right now.
Um, I did, I can share with you if you want, it's on their website, WASP, WASPIC's, going back to twenty fifteen, WASPIC's statement on the passage of twenty fifteen. Folks feel like it's a, no, I mean, theoretically, you could spend all of it and not hire any new law enforcement officers the way that it's structured. Um, so depending on what the jurisdiction's needs are, they can spend it on criminal justice purposes, which is broadly defined.
And there's no non-supplanting language in that as well, I think was, that I had read.
That you can't use it for existing law enforcement?
No, 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 that like, if you're, if you're, say, you've got something that you're paying for out of the general fund, you can use that new revenue to pay for that thing that you may have already been paid.
There is no non-supplant language.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, um, I believe that's correct. Um, I believe that's correct. I'll double check that. Um, yeah. I did talk with, um, WASPIC staff the day before session ended about their position on it. And they are going to be directing their members to, um, carefully document any concerns or, um, issues that they have in terms of correctly implementing this as passed the legislature. And so, and like with any really big piece of legislation, there's always, almost always, trailer legislation. So if there needs to be legislation to make some tweaks and make things work better, that might be something that comes up next session as well. So, um, Leonard, I'm happy to take this if you want, or if you want to kick this off.
Yeah, so, i- in looking at how this, um, session went, our desire would be to get started much sooner, um, in the fall of this year and prep for the session. So we've kind of laid out just a few dates and timelines. But, uh, we'd want to start developing the twenty-six legislative priorities, uh, in late summer, fall, and kind of then walk through some of those key dates, I'll pass back over to, um.
I was told like late summer is when the committees start meeting and that may even be an even better time. So like, yeah, if you've got, I don't know, but if you've got specific issues that fall within certain committee's jurisdiction, they have like their kind of work sessions in the late summer to just get your, trip your ideas in there, is that?
So committees can meet throughout the interim. I heard that the Senate Housing Committee, um, that Senator Bateman is the chair of, has a meeting, um, next month, where they're going to be talking about some things. So you're correct, so if there are like specific policy things and there's policy discussions that need to take place, it should happen before December, November, December. Um, my personal preference is that if we're going to be asking for budget funds, that those conversations start now. Um, the state agencies are already putting together their supplemental budget that they're going to be submitting to OFM. They're basically being told, don't ask for anything new, um, prioritize diversity, equity, inclusion, those kinds of things. Um, and just really highlight, you know, the urgent need for, if there's any funding and basically be prepared for law cuts. Um, so, but if, like, for instance, on the capital budget, if, if the county has, has pretty much lined up, we need to be having those discussions now with our legislators so that we can, um, hopefully get some support for getting some funding next session. We don't, we don't want to be in a position where we're on our back foot and it's last minute and we're just talking to them.
You can have it ready by the end of July.
Let's go.
That's great, okay. Um, next session starts January twelfth, which isn't that long from now, so, um.
So we'll be having a work session, a planning session meeting?
Uh, yeah, we'll be having a work session. We'll, uh, bring Deborah in and we'll go over the priorities and fine tune them for twenty twenty-six.
A lot of banging going on. Any questions, online commissioners, if anything? Okay. Awesome.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for your time, Deb.
Thank you. Because I don't know what to do.
Okay. I don't know what to do with this.
Yeah, what is this thing, hand it to me.
This article, take it.
I'll get it where it needs to go.
Get it out of my hand, hurry.
It's one of the ones who knows. Thank you.
All right, okay. Next topic for the morning is an overview of Public Health and Social Services Housing Funds.
So, I want you to come to the table here with us. As requested, uh, and we want to provide a high-level overview of the housing funds. And, uh, we know that, uh, Tom is out attending to a family matter this morning, and so our thoughts are with him. We have our director of Public Health and Social Services and our, uh, budget and finance manager here, ready to give an overview. Summer will lead the conversation. But the goal is to give you that high-level review of all the different funds and to start having some conversations. We know that these funds have been, some of them have been in, in question as to what's going to be funded going forward. And I've just heard from our lobbyists, there are still potential cuts coming down from the state that we're watching. As mentioned previously, we're not given a lot of heads-up notice when some of these funding, uh, streams are, uh, looked at to be removed. And so we're trying to anticipate and be nimble and then bring that back to you as potential impacts. At the same time, we're aware that on the right-of-way funding, as it's known, there are discussions we're having with Commerce actively about what they're going to fund and they've taken a different approach that we can, uh, talk briefly about in this presentation. So we're working that through as the landscape is a bit changing. In addition to working with our partners, City of Lacey, City of Olympia, have enough, uh, providers to make sure that everything's going to line up. So with that, I'll turn over, uh, to Summer.
Thank you. Good morning. So, uh, this is the overview of the Public Health and Social Services Housing Funds. Um, this will be part one of a two-part series. We are hoping to bring back part two sometime in mid to late July. So, um, this is Public Health and Social Services Housing and Community Renewal Funded Programs, also known as Housing and Homelessness Services. Uh, you can see that it is quite colorful. Um, just for your reference, sales tax-funded, uh, programs are in blue, state-funded programs are in green, fees that are received by the county are in yellow, and federal funding is in the pink or salmon color. All of these programs, there are thirteen total, uh, are within the Housing and Community Renewal Fund, fourteen hundred. Um, this is, uh, the revenues that come into this particular fund, uh, fall into two primary categories. The total amount of the revenues in, uh, Housing and Homelessness is just under, or just over twenty-six million. And you can see that's broken out into about seventeen and a half million for restricted, uh, programming and then about a little under nine million dollars for grants. The total budget authority across all thirteen programs is, um, twenty-eight million dollars and FTE costs associated are one point six five million. And the actual amount programmed out in the expenditure budget for costs associated with running the programs is twenty-six point seven million. Are there any questions about that part so far?
You said one point six five million goes to staff?
That is correct.
How many staff?
Um, I believe the staff number, and I'd have to rely on Jen, Dr. Jen or Jennifer for this, I believe it was sixty-three total across all of the programs within this particular fund, is that correct?
I would have to verify.
Sixty, sixty-three.
I think it was sixty-three, but we'll get that number for you, um, broken out and verified in part two when we go over all of the different funding sources or the different funds within Public Health and Social Services and what the program breakout looks like. So when we're looking at, um, the different programs, you'll notice there are some, two white columns. Those are, um, essentially, the first one, Program Zero 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 is for placeholder for COLAs that may be negotiated through contracts or for the next year and a budget cycle. Um, and there's also administrative overhead costs, uh, which is the bulk of FTE costs there. You'll see it's two million, I'm sorry, one point three million. That is in support of many of the projects from housing and essential needs. Um, and going to the right, you'll see there's no FTE cost tied to those particular programs because it's all funneled into this administrative bucket, if you will.
Can you say that again?
When you look at column six, Housing and Essential Needs, it's in green, that's the state funding. There are no FTE costs associated with the programs to the right of that.
Okay, I see.
So, the cost for FTEs for those particular programs are captured in the administrative column to run those programs.
So all those dollars are going to services?
Mm-hmm, exactly, they're all going to the services. All of the costs for FTEs are programmed or they're held within the administrative funding or program bucket of the Fund fourteen hundred for housing and homelessness. So the fund itself, um, beyond those two. So the fund itself, beyond those two administrative buckets, if you will, provides support for local home funds, home fund, capital projects, eviction prevention, housing and essential needs, the right of way funding, there's document recording fees for affordable housing, home community housing development, human services, youth affordable housing, the CBDG entitlement, and then the home entitlement. And the definitions for those particular programs within Housing and Community Renewal are listed below the graph, and it provides you a little bit of context for what each of those are established for. I know that's a lot of information in one slide.
So, this is like old terminology that I haven't heard a lot lately, but like when I started, there was like, there was, you know, Thurston Thrives had all the housing teams, and they had what they called the pipeline, which was for the capital dollars, where the, where they would sort of figure out, the organizations would get together and kind of share, like, they'd talk about it and they'd kind of put their projects in an order for this one particular capital stream of funding. You remember that?
Oh, yeah.
So does that appear somewhere, or is that a different thing?
I'm passing over it too.
Does that exist anymore?
That I would have to research out for you.
Is that the Blue Lake stuff?
Do you?
It confused the hell out of me. The red teams and blue teams.
Can you say it again? Because I'm looking at the confused faces of my team, but we're not tracking it. Just describe it again.
Alex, do you know?
If the pipeline is still in existence?
Yeah.
The pipeline.
They called it the pipeline.
I know, it confused me.
Yeah, the pipeline is still in existence.
I'm just trying to figure out where the pipeline fits in all this.
We pool the funding from the local home fund, 1,406 and 5386, which I don't see that number on this chart, but 2060, also not on the chart, document recording fees. So we pool the funding and then the, so the TAHAD, the Thurston Affordable Housing Advisory Board is who recommends the pipeline projects, projects to be placed on the pipeline, and that goes to the Regional Housing Council. So then yesterday you just approved three pipeline projects to move forward. So we pool the pipeline.
So the pool, the pipeline is like, all this, tell me if I got it straight, all the streams from that array that relate to capital, like projects, kind of get braided into one pool and then, so that, you know, rather than like littler, that way you can get bigger projects funded. And then you line those bigger projects up, and it's very collaborative. There was, used to be the red team or whatever under Thurston Thrives. Now it's the, we've restructured all that with the Regional Housing Council and the subgroups, but then you'd have these projects that couldn't get funded, like if the little streams were dealt with separately, they wouldn't fund something that's, you know, let's say $2 million. But if you put them all together and then everybody cooperates basically and lines their projects up, you may have to wait through seven years or whatever, but then you can get the money, the braided money for the bigger projects. That was all put together kind of right before I got on the board.
And there were issues with that process.
Yes.
There sounds like a lot of issues with that process, to be honest, just here on the sideline.
Yeah, and so I remember coming in and the Regional Housing Council being new, right? And that was one of the main things we heard. And so then this is why, like...
That's why the regional, like this is a little backstory where like the regional, there was a group that predated the Regional Housing Council of Electeds, and it would do this.
What was it called, the?
The CIP?
Yes.
Community investment partnership. Then, then my predecessor basically said, like, he took that authority away from that group and put it under this Thurston Thrives group, which was the how, the actual recipients of the money that would collaborate and work together. And that was controversial because it kind of cut the elected, the city electeds out. And that was a big controversy when I got to the board. So we, Commissioner Hutchings had voted against that. So then we had two votes, so we basically reversed that immediately and kind of created what then became Regional Housing Council to kind of put the decision-making processes back to a council of electeds and out of, because it was thought of as not, as being sort of a conflict of interest or whatever to have the nonprofits that are going to receive the money, like collaborating on how to spend the money and lack of accountability. You know, all the reasons why you have elected officials make decisions because of public accountability and stuff like that. So that was all, and then of course, all the cities didn't like that they were kind of cut out of it. So that was all a big thing from like 2018, 19-ish.
So now...
Terminology, I was just kind of wondering how that fit with our new scheme.
So now the Thurston Affordable Housing Advisory Board, annually, we release, our office releases, an RFI, a request for information, for projects to be placed onto the pipeline three years in advance. So this past year, we released it for 2028. So the advisory board reviews applications, selects projects. So when we get to 2028, this funding, they set aside 60% of the total amount that we have to provide to projects in a year. So I think this year it was roughly 3 million went into the pipeline projects for 2028. So we do it three years in advance.
And what we can do, Steph, is talk offline because it's in that example that commissioners are asking to have more understanding of it and to be able to provide perspective, policy perspective about that. And so there's, there's some processes that have been built even before some of our commissioners, our current commissioner team, because you said it was established maybe right before you came on board. So some of these things aren't, it doesn't mean that they're wrong, it just means that we have to slow them down so that we can have understanding and then figure out, and this is the whole reason for this session, if funding is going to be taken away, some of this is, we've created a complicated way, we're pulling money together, getting it out to folks and then bringing it back for the court's consideration. It's hard for us at the table to even understand that this presentation has taken several weeks to get together. And so I think we can talk about the workflow of how some of these decisions are made, not because it's a bad process, but simply so that we can inform the commissioners, because we don't want them uninformed. And we're headed towards rough seas here with funding drying up in certain areas. They have to be able to understand what levers are at their disposal, and what decisions they're going to make, and what those intended and unintended outcomes are going to be with all of our partners. So that'll be an exercise we take offline, we can work through.
Thank you. So I think Alex pointed out that the affordable housing mix was, it is in column, just for your information, four, eight, and 11, and those are notated below. And they're also part of the home fund capital projects and the document fees, and then the youth affordable housing. So that'll fall in that work that we will work on and bring forward, hopefully in August or into late July. So happy to try to answer any questions here. You know, I was trying to bring together with the budget staff and with Public Health and Social Services staff, what all encompasses the Housing and Homelessness Services Fund, as well as all of the programs that are associated with it, and provide a clear visual aid of the restricted revenues and the grant revenues that are essentially funding these different programs. If there are no questions, then we'll move on. If there's any direction, happy to take that for our next part two series in the series.
Which is what? What's part two?
Part two is an overview of all the different funding sources in public health.
Beyond housing, you mean?
Beyond housing, yeah.
And any other?
It will include housing as part of it, but we'll look at all the different funding. And I think as part of that, there's some great education on, is it called foundational public health, that Dr. Fryhite will provide to help understand what are requirements that pass through from the state, which is really important to the broad discussion.
Before we leave this slide, so, you know, there's been a slide like that from like 2019 that I remember. It wasn't, didn't have quite as many columns, but I think it was oriented vertically in my brain, but it was a, I guess, my question is, is the entirety of this budget, which adds up to 28.3 million, does that entire amount of money, all these different programs go through the Regional Housing Council ultimately, and then to the board, or are some of these separate non-RHC streams?
Yeah, there's, there's, like the CDPG is a non-RHC stream.
It's got its own process.
And I'm like, Summer and the team...
I believe that's what Alex was pointing out, was that the three areas would be the home fund capital project, so it's the fourth column.
Yeah.
And then the yellow, the document recording fees for affordable housing, that's the eighth column, and then youth affordable housing, which is the 11th column. And you'll see both of those are sales tax funded, and then there's one that comes in from recording fees.
But those do go through RHC?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yes.
I was asking anything that does not go through.
I was asking if any of these columns don't.
It should be the remainders, correct?
The only one that doesn't go through the RHC is CDPG.
Okay. Yeah, because I can, I mean, I know some of those do. Like HAN does, I know for sure. Diversion prevention.
All the homeless services do.
Homeless service, yeah, Human Services Fund definitely does. Okay. Because we've added, there's probably three or four new ones from what it looked like in 2019.
I'm wondering if we should have a five-year review of the home fund. It's been five years in effect, right, seeing some of those capital projects that have been funded, right? And kind of showing, some have been like really amazing projects. I'm thinking about the apartments over here. Can't remember any others right now, but I think it would be great for the board to have like a refresher on like, these are all the great projects that the home fund has been able to fund in our community and kind of focus more on the capital projects piece. Is that something that...
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, I think that's good because that was money that didn't just fall in the county's lap from the state. Like, we had to vote to pass that and impose that.
It was the council matter.
It would be, I think, useful for the community to see what they've got for that effort by the commissioner.
We will add that to the next presentation.
Any other questions then? So you're, we're about done with this slide, is what you're saying, Summer? Unless there's questions?
Unless you all want to continue the discussion.
Any other questions on this slide? There's a lot there.
It's, it's just, I don't know, it's, I don't want to say it's, I hate to say it's confusing, but it is confusing, you know, and I, like, I've, I've, I've got a decent amount of history with it. Like, I was on the CIP, I've been...
You were on that original group?
Yeah.
Well, there was a group before that. It was HHST, combined with United Way, and they called it CIP. I mean, yeah, it's been, the flow chart of the history of how these dollars have been spent is really convoluted. The, what was I going to say? Oh, I was just going to say that the total budget, I mean, this chart, in the 2019, that total budget was like, I want to say 9 million, you know, and now it's 28.3. So that's like a hu, yeah, I mean, the home fund didn't exist, that's 5.1. The 1,406 didn't exist. The, the right of way funding didn't exist. So I mean, right there, that's, that's like nine or 10 million just right there that I just picked out. So I mean, it was like, we've, we've tripled the amount of resources.
And those ones that have been added have been braided in to this pipeline, is that essentially what you're saying?
Yeah, some of them.
And then the decision-making for how that money is spent is then farmed out to the RHC?
Well, yeah, I mean, there's always been an external group, as far as I've been aware, that's done it. Now it's the RHC, which is sort of consolidated from all the different like models that we've used, Thurston Thrives and CIP and HHST and all that. But yeah, I mean, it all gets, the idea was to like, make some sense out of it. Like, have a group that's actually making sense out of this, because every group of commissioners would look at this chart and go, what the heck? So that's what the RHC was all about, is to have a group that were like, understood this in a way that they could, you know, put the, like Alex was describing, put different pieces together in a logical fashion to fund bigger projects and cite them in the right places. And that was the goal.
This was four years of my life.
Yeah, because this was so, the complexity of this, this slide, like, shows why the RHC needed to be created and helping to make sense of it. Okay, well, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, so this one's less busy. It's just showing you the breakout of the housing revenues and what is restricted and what's grant.
Can I go back one?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So I, the CDPG one does seem to be an outlier to me, in that it is, you know, like, I don't know, I'd like to spend time talking about that more this year, because I don't necessarily like it lumped in the way that it is, because I think it has kind of its own purpose and mission. It can be not necessarily the same as, you know, as like some of the housing goals up there. And if you like, you know, if you go to the, you know, the federal kind of mission for it, it's about, it's a lot of, it's about community resilience and economic development and things like that, and which is kind of...
Well, most of the stuff that's funded by it is not housing, that I, my recollection.
Correct.
So in a way, it's, I mean, I don't know, maybe you guys can explain exactly how it fits, because it's, I know you can do housing with it, but...
We do housing with it. You can't do no construction with CDPG, but we do a lot of rehab and critical home repair projects. It just depends on what the jurisdiction or the jurisdictions intend to prioritize in their funding.
Because like Tom Warner and Lacey, like I wasn't really, you know, when it's theirs, they do their stuff. Where we get involved, and I've been involved personally, and now you are, is the South County one. And I don't think that's ever gone to housing, to my knowledge.
However, when you lump it in there with, and you get a, and you get a group of new mayors, and they don't exactly have the history or understand what it is, they, it's easily to just make, it's easy to make the assumption that that's what it's for. And that, in my, and kind of, that's what I feel kind of happened this last time. They're like, oh, well, we don't have, we don't have any of those, you know, housing type projects.
So they didn't apply?
Yeah. So there was some confusion, I think, and, you know, I'm not, I don't want to, when the, when the app went out, the app was titled as, you know, like, basically like that. And if you, and you know, just a layperson or a, you know, a, you know, a part-time mayor, you know, like I think about like Callie, if she was to look at that, she would go, oh, yeah, and just quickly disregard it, not knowing, like, what truly can be done with it. So it can cause...
We should be able to outreach to...
Yeah. I, I think there's conversations.
Okay, let's go to the next high chart.
Same information, just giving you a visual on where the revenues are coming in, what's restricted and what's grant monies, and then the expenditures by type, and that's breaking it down by the, whether it's FTE costs or benefits, I'm sorry, that is FTE costs, supplies, services, or any inter-fund charges that happen to the fund. And that was our high-level overview, hoping to get direction on what to bring forward next go-round.
I know that we need direction per se, because we're going to bring an overview of all the different funds. Just if there's any follow-up, which we heard a few items, if there's any additional follow-up for us that we can do, we will talk later time more about CDPG, and then get an over, a five-year overview of those funds so that we can see what projects have been built.
Does that sound like the list, commissioners? Thumbs up from Commissioner Kopp. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to suggest maybe taking a break for the session.
That'd be great.
So it's 10:15. We'll pick up at 10:30 with the next item on the agenda, which is a closed session, but we'll do an advisement on the topic of that before we get going. So we're in recess till 10:30.
Okay, good morning. We're back from a recess. It is uh... What time is it? Ten thirty-two AM. And we're up to item three on the morning's agenda, which is a closed session pursuant to RCW forty-two thirty-one forty-two. That portion of a meeting of a quasi-judicial body which relates to a quasi-judicial matter between named parties. This is appeal of a hearing examiner's decision, Wendler. Approximately twenty minutes is allocated and Commissioner Fornier is recused from this matter, so he's not present. Commissioner Grant had to step away, so she will not... I mean, she had another meeting actually, so she will not be present. So present at this juncture is Commissioner Mahia, myself, and Commissioner Klaus with the county manager. So we have legal counsel from prosecuting attorney's office, Scott Cushing. So with that, I think I'm gonna... We're gonna close the session.
Do you want me to read this to the public?
I just love to know that we are in... Yeah. We're doing the advisement, and then once we shut down our live stream, we will begin the closed session. And that... This will last for... Scott, it's twenty minutes, a good amount of time. Okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so we're at ten thirty-five. We'll go to ten fifty-five.
...
Okay, welcome back. It's 10:55 AM. We've completed the closed session, and no legislative action is taking place. We're up to commissioner items. We, again, we have three commissioners present. Is there anything commissioners you have to address? We do have a check-in at 1:30.
No, sir.
Okay, then we're at the end of this morning's work session agenda. We're adjourned. See everybody back at 1:30.